Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Schifrin, and I will call the meeting of the Planning Board to order on Monday, June 27, 2022, at 7:33 PM. I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstetter is present.
Ian? Ian?
I forgot to unmute the computer. Ian Ortiz is present.
Okay, Laura Schifrin present. I'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance done. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank all of our military past and present. The meeting is being recorded. I do not have any, well, I may have deletions. We do not have, as per the agenda, we do not have the minutes of June 13, 2022. They're not ready yet. And I don't know if Carol or Ian were able to read the minutes of May 23. I was not. I couldn't scroll down, and I couldn't print them because they were all off to one side. So I don't know if it's something wrong with my computer and my technical abilities. But were Carol or Ian, were you able to read the minutes of May 23?
I was not able.
And I was not able.
Okay, I'm going to ask that those two sets of minutes be moved to the next meeting, which I believe is July 18. Is that correct? Yes, okay. All right. Oh, I did, I'm sorry, I went right to, well, I thought I was deleting, so I guess that is under 1.4. Going to 1.5. Have there been any volunteer forms for the associate position?
No. There is still a volunteer form from Kim Craven on file. I don't think she officially withdrew. Would you like me to reach out to her?
Yeah, ask her if she is interested in that position.
Okay.
Again, it would mean attending some meetings.
Okay.
So we need to know if she would be available to do that. Okay, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
So we will go on to our appointment. It says, yeah, and we're right on time, 7:35, Stan.
Good job.
Thank you.
So I need to ask some generic questions about the over-55 bylaw. And particularly, it's Section C, Number 7, which pertains to the open space requirement. And as you know, most of these properties, I've had a couple of people come to see me. Most of these properties are fairly small. And there's a 30% open space requirement, which it says in the bylaw that she'll be permanently have a conservation restriction enforceable by the town. So who did you envision would hold the conservation restriction? Because on, we've had other projects where there's some kind of similar requirements. You have these small parcels, and it's really cumbersome to get somebody to want to accept the conservation restriction on something that, on a two-acre parcel, could be as small as 2/3 of an acre. So I kind of need some clarity on that so I can forward that on to the people that have come to see me. And then relative to that question, can that open space contain things like drainage facilities or septic system and things like that? Because again, on a two-acre lot, on a two-acre lot, if you can't do anything in that open space, even though it's restricted, a lot of times in open space developments, you can do drainage and things like that. It makes it, it virtually makes it impossible to do it on a small, on like a two-acre lot. So I think you need to take a look at that section and maybe tweak it somehow or come up with, or make it a little clearer so that people like myself can advise people that come to see me that want to try to do something like this.
You know, I have, I think Chaz is on.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. And since this was put on or accepted, I think Beth, you said it was in 2021? Okay. So I read this quickly this evening, and honestly, I was perplexed when I read that section myself because I don't know why we would do that. We already have other restrictions, like it can only be on a lot that has public water, so it can't be well water. So, and what if there are no actual conservation issues? I'm not understanding. It seems ambiguous to me that we would put a conservation restriction on a parcel that may not have any conservation issues. So I might have missed something. Beth, you've now been here long enough and gone through this. I didn't realize you were here, like four and a half years already. Where has that time gone? So that, Mike wasn't here. Ian wasn't here when this was all being discussed. Chaz, do you have any insight or remember any of our discussions as to why that was put on?
Well, as a liaison, I can't really enter into a discussion in regards to something like that. I could give you some of my comments off record, but I, you know, I know that Mike has been asking questions in regards to that. I honestly don't remember a conversation in regards to conservation restriction when we were putting this together.
All right, and neither do I.
The other thing I, I'm sorry. That, you know, a conservation restriction could protect the land even if it didn't have any quote-unquote "specific" conservation issues. But again, if you're going to have a 3/4-acre parcel that's got a conservation restriction, it could be surrounded by other residential properties. It seems to defeat the overall purpose of getting dense housing that's over 55. The two work against each other when you try to, when you try to put the pen to paper and make it all work. It just, it seems to take away a chunk of the property that might be usable for housing.
Right.
Stan, you're quoting, what, C7?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm taking a look at it if you want to.
And all the other parts of this, and I commented this back to Beth, which is why I wasn't quite, well, we didn't have a bylaw before. So what I'm thinking is that a lot of how we built towns and woods is in here. Because this is, this is how we built towns and woods, with all the, not necessarily C1, but 2, well, 3 did not apply. Neither did 4. This is obvious because we were on a bigger parcel of land and further away from whatever else we might have been abutting.
Madam Chair, can I offer some information?
Not right now, okay. So, and also, in 5, it gives the Planning Board the right to waive many of these things. Once, so if we had a good project coming before us, you know, that would fill a lot of the needs of the town and didn't necessarily fit into this little mold, the Planning Board can waive those. The Planning Board, not zoning, but the Planning Board. So, and that's under 5, C5. I don't know if that would also apply to just the conservation part of this really... And to your question, Mike, at the end of your basically repeating what the law was, to who is going to monitor this once-a-year conservation restriction? Well, I mean, it's not going to be Planning Board. So is it going to end up being Land Use Coordinator to do that? I don't see anybody else who would be doing it because it would have to be that or the conservation agent themselves. And it may not be a conservation issue at all. It's only going to have the term, because I agree with Stan. It's only going to have that term. I'm sorry it's there. It would not, it doesn't ring a bell to me as having any usefulness whatsoever. Because if there was something there that conservation would have placed a restriction on for conservation purposes, then it would be, it would come out in the plan. Conservation would then be involved. Why planning was involved with the conservation statement, I have no idea. Except that Veronica was on the board, and it may have come, you know, from Veronica, who used to be on conservation. So...
This was, I'm sorry, but this was modeled on the Littleton bylaw, and I think that's why it's in there. I think it was just something that the Board didn't really discuss in detail. That's my recollection. That's my recollection.
Yeah. So certainly, we can recommend an amendment to this. And certainly, until we do that, I believe Number 5 takes care of it. If planning doesn't see a reason for it. Now, Mike had his hand up, so I'm going to have Mike first and then Stan, okay? Mike?
Yeah, thank you. So first off, yeah, I was going to chime in with what Beth mentioned. It was modeled after the Littleton bylaw. I also believe it was included because it is used in open space protection as a mechanism to allow higher density housing without having to have larger lots. And so the idea is if you can cluster the open space in one area, you don't have to spread out stuff as much. It is definitely a very small area to apply a conservation restriction to. I think in general, conservation restriction isn't actually related to anything environmental. It's conservation in the sense that we're conserving the land to not be developed. And that's a, that's a common thing with conservation restrictions. It's not, they're not put in places, and because this is a critical habitat, although it can be a critical habitat, for example. It's often where foregoing the development rights from that area of the parcel that has a conservation restriction.
I understand. Let me say, and you know this as well as I do, the town has more than enough open space. We don't need to add something in our verbiage that makes sure we get some more that doesn't get built on. There's plenty of it to go around. When nobody's going to be doing anything that wants to hurt the environment or the water supply or the septic systems. We're not doing that. So to keep doing something like this when it's already going to be addressed in many other issues, I don't think it's necessary. But I do feel still, after reading 5, that the Planning Board can take care of waiving that when a project comes before us.
That was my question, though. In 5, if you look at 5, Laurie, it says the Planning Board may waive setback requirements or internal, or to buildings or internal lots created. I don't think it, I'm not sure that gives you the right to waive some of these other requirements. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but that, to me, it seems very specific about what the Planning Board can waive. It doesn't give them the right to waive any sections of the bylaw. It looks like it's just the setbacks.
Well, I think it needs to be tweaked. I do remember the...
Madam Chair, if I can?
Yes.
I know that we have an open session coming up tomorrow with Adam. Adam was the one that worked on this. Adam knows this particular bylaw. My suggestion is that I can see if I can get, if somebody is available from the Planning Board to talk with him, I can get them on his schedule.
What time?
That would have to be coordinated with Sabrina. Usually, it's in the later afternoon, like between 4 and 7. I don't know what times are available.
Can you let, can you let me know? Because I know it'll only be like 15 minutes or so, right?
Yeah.
With him? Can you let me know, and I'll, I will make myself available?
All right, I'll write the email now.
Okay, I see that Robert is here. So can the record show that Robert has joined us?
Yep, thank you.
Stan, Mike, your hand is still up.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to continue or not.
Sure.
Okay. So I had done some background on this and the development. And like Beth said, it was modeled off Littleton. And I believe the idea was that it was a way to allow for that. In general, just for informational conservation restrictions that are held with this type and also open space are for use of the residents of the parts, of the people, of the people who living there. It's not available to all residents in town. So for example, if you were in a subdivision and you had a conservation restriction behind your house, all residents of town couldn't go there. It's basically the consolidation of what is your yard space. In this case, it would be a very, probably a buffer strip surrounding the property, which might also end up being something that would be part of what the normal setbacks would be. You might find that the setback requirement, it covers the same amount of open space. And you could just say, okay, we're also going to make it a conservation restriction. I did do some digging on this. And based on the verbiage of this, it would be the town who would have to hold the conservation restriction. So it wouldn't, just because of the wording specifically, it wouldn't be able to be transferred to, say, a nonprofit or a land trust. So that was just the one other piece I was going to throw out there. So yeah, it would probably be something that, you mentioned it earlier, and you're probably right. It would be me or the conservation agent managing it. Yep.
Yeah, I can't, but again, myself, as somebody who was on planning, and yes, I remember the term now, it was modeled after Littleton, I don't see the value in the small lots of having that 25 to 30%, which, like you said, may just be the setbacks in a small lot. So I'm not seeing the validity in having it done. And that'll be my question to Adam. So I think it's just more work, and that is not necessary.
I think that's, oh, sorry.
Robert?
I just, maybe I'm off base with this, but I think in terms of planning and the things that the town is coming, has to address, particularly with affordable housing, the Planning Board can have a role in altering requirements or providing exceptions so that certain things can be achieved. And I'll give you a couple of examples. First of all, cluster housing does protect the environment rather than having housing sprawl. It also has an aesthetic vantage that you can preserve the natural roadway and change setbacks so that although all this housing is existing, it's not visible on the highway. So you can maintain those tree-lined, you know, roadways. And this is, gave you a sense of a reliable and a posture from a town. And so, for example, in some affordable housing concepts, I've been able to deal with, talking to communities about using conventional non-conforming lot plans. And many of them are on the town's tax wall so that we can get special relief and reduce the cost of housing. And therefore, right now, all housing, all affordable housing programs that I'm aware of don't address the real cost in housing. They address, you know, supplements from the federal government, the county government, the town, or unions and things like that, without really making an analysis of where the costs are going. And so, for example, if you had a property on the tax wall that was defaulting taxes and the town was receiving it, it may not be a conforming law in a conventional way, but it may be useful to the town to allow such things to meet the affordable housing quota it has to meet. And so those are things that we can protect, you know, people in our town that work here and, you know, the cost of housing, to try to keep it down so they can stay here, is also something to consider. So the role in the Planning Board, as I see it, and please, I'm not declaring any of this to be what's needed. I'm just bringing it up for topic of thought and conversation. So there are a lot of things that could be implemented here that, rather than using a guideline from another town, for example, we can look at our situation and, for example, go to the assessors' office and say, well, how many dilapidate properties are untaxable? And what can we do with them? Are they, if they can be used in that interest or whatever?
Robert, I just want you to know that Town Properties is looking at that. We have, we have a committee that is appointed by the, by the Board of Selectmen per the charter. And they are looking at that.
Oh, good.
At tax, you know, that's being explored. And those are good thoughts that you have. And hopefully, we are able to do something with that in the future. I just feel now a little silly in having recommended this bylaw as written. And we'll see if we can't get something, a suggestion from Adam tomorrow. Now, Mike, I see your hand up. It is up again, right? Okay, just a minute. Beth, would now be a time, since this is in, you know, Stan is here, for me to read the memo from Eric?
Well, I don't, I didn't intend on that being read. That was an email correspondence that I pulled up and sent only to you. So if, I mean, that's up to you, but I'm not sure that it was generally intended. It's perfectly your call.
Well, the subject is update on age-restricted housing. So since we're on that bylaw, I would like to share this with the rest of the Board. And Stan. So this is from, and whoever's listening. This is, actually, it's from Eric to Stan and Mike. Did you get this?
Yes, they did.
Did Stan get it?
Yes, because he's copied on it, so yes.
Yeah. So, all right, I'd like to share it with the Board then. This is from the building inspector. My understanding, after speaking with someone who helped design the bylaw, is that the age, I wonder who that was? He spoke to that helped design the bylaw, that the age-restricted development bylaw cannot be a subdivision due to Title V restrictions. It is more akin to a condominium or an apartment building. I don't understand that. The bylaw is silent regarding the need for a site plan special permit that is not specifically omitted from the bylaw. So I would assume site plan review is still required. It would still be a change in use that requires more than five spaces, meaning the parking spaces, which I believe is true. And the bylaw does not contain language to suggest otherwise. Although it would be redundant, I will look at the particulars of the site when I have more time to analyze it and provide you with determination. Okay, so he was probably, which I do not know what the property is that you're kind of asking questions about. Right, Stan?
Right, I've been asked not to talk specifics, only generalities.
Okay. But another good point for us to look at, and I might bring that one up to Adam as well. Okay, Mike?
Thanks. Just two points, and then unfortunately, I have to hop off. One, the reason that subdivision conversation came up was an error on my part. I thought it was a subdivision that was being proposed when we initially had a conversation with Stan about what his project was. And I said, oh, yeah, we can set you up for a preliminary subdivision discussion. And he's like, no, I don't want that. And somehow, that kind of communicated out. So that was my, that whole topic came up because of my misinterpretation. So I'm sorry about that, if that helps clarify. The only other thing I will mention, just for, in case I wasn't clear in the brief, so this is a bylaw that was passed at a town meeting. And so I've talked to Adam about this kind of thing previously. And in general, he will probably tell you that to change a bylaw, you'd have to run through town meeting and have a public vote. So, yeah.
I don't think that's, I...
We do have one in September, so...
Yeah, and bylaws are made to be tweaked. They're, they're a living document. Because usually, when you put a bylaw into a place and you find out how you can't enforce it or that it's not doing what you thought it was going to do, you tweak it. That's what they're for, I'm not afraid of bylaws. Chaz?
Well, I have to hop off. Thanks, guys. Take care.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I did notice that there was another Board of Selectmen member on this meeting, and we have not posted for it. I am the liaison for this particular committee. So I just need to inform you that we had not posted for this, and I did not know the other member was going to jump on this meeting.
Okay, I did not either.
Let me just get off, let me just unmute. The only reason I came on is...
You can't, you can't talk, Teresa.
Oh, okay. Then I'll shut off. I'm going to come off then.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, so this is going to be rather quick this evening because we don't have a lot of things prepared. And we really wanted to get, Stan, did you get what you needed, you think?
Yeah, I got, I got you guys thinking about it and asking the questions that need to be asked. So that's, that's what I hope to, that's what I hope to get tonight. I didn't expect to get, I didn't expect to get a hard answer. I expected, I was hoping that you guys would say, geez, we got to, we do have to take a look at that. Maybe we need to do something with it, so...
Yeah.
I mean, unfortunately, the couple of people that have come to see me, it kind of puts them on hold, but they can't do anything the way it is now anyhow. So we'll see where it all goes.
Okay.
All right, great.
Okay, well, thanks for bringing this to our attention, and we will, we'll work on it. And we'll get something done sooner rather than later. Maybe we get something ready for the September meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, so next on our agenda is our work session and towns and master plan update. I do not have anything, and I will not be able to work on anything for at least a week. But I'd like it on the next agenda. And hopefully, I can do that enough in advance since the next meeting is on the 18th to get it all out to everyone. You can review it, and then we can just have a vote. Because we do need to get the master plan voted on.
May I speak, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I did put in everyone's folder Chapter 2 of the Housing Production Plan, which is the housing goals and strategies that Chairman Schiffman has been referring to for a few meetings now. And I just wanted to ask each Board member, if you would, just go through that carefully because that's the amendment that will be added to the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will do that as well. And any notes that anybody has, please, at least a week before our next meeting, at least a week, make your comments, okay? And hopefully, we'll also have the minutes for you to review a week... And hopefully we'll also have the minutes for you to review a week before the meeting. So any changes that need to be changed can be done. Um, Carol, I don't know if you have anything on Safe Roots to School?
Actually, I do. Um, the Recreation Department, Emmy Hoff, they're hosting a bike rodeo on 11 July. Um, unfortunately, Rachel from Safe Roots to School, she was asked to speak, but she can't attend. But Safe Roots to School is going to donate a total of, um, 12 helmets of different sizes.
Wow.
And they're gonna provide some bike-related stickers, some bookmarks and ticket sheets.
Nice.
So, um, so that's gonna happen on the 11th.
Okay, nice. Thank you, Carol.
Okay.
3.3 Stormwater Permit Inspection Reports, Other Related Correspondence. Has there been anything, Beth?
Yes, we did receive a monthly construction inspection checklist from, uh, the Campbell Farm Project. And everything looks to be in, in order. Um, Stan, who just got off the call, is the site inspector for that. Um, and he also submitted the full, um, what we call Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is part of the Stormwater Management Permit. It's a very long document, so I just put it in the folder for, um, any of the board members who want to see what that is. But that is a requirement, um, for Stormwater Management Permits. And it's in the folder. Thank you.
I, and is anybody prepared to speak to the stormwater regulation to have a discussion this evening? I'm not. You know, I'm not. Okay, I don't see any. Um, and then under correspondence, um, Beth, do you wanna do 4.1?
Yeah, sure. Uh, sure. So notices from Townsend. In the folder, you find, um, the decision for 241 Main Street, both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals decisions. Those you can view at your leisure. Um, you will see a legal notice for a public hearing for the planning board for, um, 256 Main Street. And that is our next, uh, the planning board's next meeting on July 18th at 7:00 PM, um, in Selectmen's Chambers. That meeting, if it's convenient for the board, um, if you want to start later, that's absolutely fine, but I just thought I'd bring that up. And then there is, um, another legal notice of public hearing for the same project at 256 Main Street. And that is, um, for the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's on July 20th. And there's also a legal notice for the planning board, again, on the 18th, for a scenic roads, um, a scenic roads hearing in your folders. And I also put the decision for Seaver Road preliminary subdivision approval in the folders.
Is the 256 Main Street, is that where the veterinarian was and the auto school?
That's correct.
Okay.
They're looking to, um, change it from commercial to, um, residential use for one-bedroom apartments.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so that's site plan review. And, uh, I will be sending out the application, uh, well ahead of that meeting. I have it now, but, um, I can send that out now if you want.
And you mentioned that the 18th was gonna begin at 7:00. Was there a reason for that?
Oh, actually, um, no, I'm sorry, it can't begin at 7:00. Because, sorry, there's the scenic roads. Wait. Uh, did I put the scenic roads one in there? Oh, I might not have, I'm sorry. There's a scenic roads hearing as well. And I'm sorry, I didn't put that legal notice in the folder. But that is at 6:45. So we're gonna have to start at the regular time.
6:30.
I wish, yeah, 6:30. I'm sorry. I was just thinking, since it would be the first in-person meeting, give everybody a chance to get from work to the meeting and, uh, but we're gonna have to do the normal time at 6:30 on the 18th of July.
Okay, so everyone here is aware that July 18th is in person in the Selectmen's room? Uh, okay?
Can I jump in with an FYI here, Beth, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, the, um, the property that you were talking about in regards to with, that's coming up on those public hearings, have also gone through approvals with the Historic District Commission that I wanted you guys to know as well. So they have, um, got approval in regards to design, re-changing the doors and the windows in that particular place to keep it period.
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
I mean, it would be nice to see something happen in any one of those places. I mean, I, I, I have not heard from Mr. Curtis after our last meeting, which was 241 Main Street, and now the property is for sale. So who knows if a new owner would do that or even if he's going to follow through with it if, if it doesn't sell? Cause nothing has been, uh, we haven't heard anything.
Okay, well, I can, I can report, Madam Chair, that the, um, both special permits are recorded at the registry. So anybody who sells the property or just has the property will do their due diligence, check the registry and find those two special permits with the conditions that the planning board set forth.
Okay, okay, got it. All right, um, is there anything else? Um, was there any other, uh, the 30, oh, 32?
Yes, yes.
Withdrawed?
Yeah, there is a letter in there. Um, we, the planning board received a letter. I'll read it if you'd like. "To best accident members of the planning board, on behalf of the applicant of the above reverence, reference site plan, 32 Main Street, we will no longer proceed with the application and will withdraw without prejudice. Please accept this letter as a formal withdrawal request from the scheduled public hearing for September 26th at 6:45 PM. Thank you for your time and we hope to see the subject property reach its potential use in the future. Sincerely yours, Giovanni Fadera." Um, so the board would just take action to accept this letter of withdrawal and accept it without prejudice. And that meaning that if this were, if someone were to reapply, they would not be blocked out. They would still be able to, you know, reapply at this site.
Right, okay. Um, alright. And then the only other, uh, thing was the summary that Mike had put together, Mike Crowley had put together, and that's in your documents. And you guys can review it. I have, uh, reviewed it. I'll be taking that with me tomorrow. And hopefully when Chaz tells me I have a meeting with Adam.
Could you guys please take a vote on the, um, withdrawal of 32 Main?
Oh, sure. Um, we can't just do... Okay, so we will, um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the withdrawal of the applicant of 32 Main Street without prejudice.
I shall move.
And there's a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoffsus, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Robert Thering, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes.
Thank you.
That's unanimous.
And Madam Chair, again, if you could, um, if you could maybe take a vote to allow yourself to talk with, um, Town Council with an appointment. I think that would be appropriate as well.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to have, to, for the board to appoint the chairman to meet with Town Council in reference to the age-restricted bylaw. Is there a motion? Will everybody so move that motion?
Um, I'll make a motion.
Okay, so the motion is that the chairman will have the authority to meet with Town Council in reference to the age-restricted bylaw. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoffsus, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Robert Thering, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
When you meet with Town Council, would you ask, or maybe you know the answer, why, is it okay for the planning board to waive that particular part of the bylaw? Or did you ascertain that it is not, the, the part about the conservation restriction?
I'm gonna ask him that.
Okay, cause you can waive things in site, like, in, in, site plan review, but why wouldn't you be able to waive that? So I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna ask him. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Things are interpreted by different people, different ways. They hear different things, so.
Okay.
Chaz is gonna be with me, right?
I will try. It depends on what time he has available.
Okay, if you can, just let me know.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, I, I, I would like it if you were there. So that, since you're our liaison at the Board of Selectmen, and this way there's two people hearing, hopefully the same thing. Um, I don't see any other business on our agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:14 PM.
Make, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:14 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ian seconds?
Carol.
Okay, go ahead.
Carol Hoffsus, yes.
Robert Thering, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you all very much.